You ready? Sorry about this. Ladies and gentlemen, sorry for being late. CNN is how it's past nine o'clock. We'll get this meeting started. Called the order roll call. All three members are present. Under the notice that the meeting was properly closed in May second twenty twenty five. Prayer and pledge, I believe it's District two. Oh, okay.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have the great honor and privilege of having no other than the Reverend Dr. George Young here today to give the prayer. The Reverend Dr. George Young is the former State Senator for Senate District forty eight. I am blessed to be able to call Reverend George Young, my friend. And so at this time, we ask the Reverend Dr. George Young to please come and give us our prayer. He is the pastor of no other than the Greater Mount Cornwall Missionary Baptist Church.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pettis, for the invitation, and then who are on Commissioner Lo for the invitation, and many of you. Good to see you, Brian. It's been a while. Good to see you, and what an honor and a pleasure it is to come and to share with you in this moment, if you would, for no other reason than being kind to me. Close your eyes and bow your head. Thank you, God, for this opportunity to ask your grace, your grounding, your gratitude, and your guidance for each of the county commissioners, their staff, their work, the other county officials, their staff, and residents of Oklahoma County. Your grace to approach the business of the county with open mind and caring reasoning, grounding to see with clear eyes the needs, gratitude for the opportunity to help the citizens they serve, to be encouraged and guidance to do what is best for those citizens. We need each other to better each other. Bless those who come to be not only critical but constructive in their presentations this day. We claim these blessings in this day and forevermore in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Senator, congratulations on your newly marriage.
All right. First item of business is approval of minutes.
I move.
There's motion is in second to approve minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Recurring agenda items, item number two.
Move the claims.
There's motion and second to approve claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number three, Ashley McMichael.
Good morning. We have one addition. It's requisition one, two, five, zero, six, six, one, seven to Ford Audio Video Systems in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
I'll move with the correction.
Move with the correction. Is there a second?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We do have, oh, it's the next item, second.
All those in favor for approved?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, on the consent, there is a Scrivener's error on item number eighteen. It reads two point two five eight point three zero, and it should be two thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents. It is correct on the attachment. Is that Mr. Blau?
Item number twenty-four, the last item. It is to appoint a new receiving officer for District one. Due to the necessary signatures, we are unable to get that to your agenda, but we have it to present to you. Ryan's passing it out right now, so you'll receive that and approve. We would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I'll move to receive.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Receive it, Doc. Aye.
Then I would move the consent docket subject to those or including those corrections and just added attachment.
There's motion and second for approval of consent. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to item number twenty-five. This is proclaiming May fourth through tenth is Oklahoma County Home and Community Education Week. This is, we do this rather often. Yep.
Uh, I will read the proclamation. Whereas
Excuse me, absolutely.
This is for the Oklahoma County Home and Community Education Week. Whereas this organization began in nineteen ten, and their original goal was to teach farm women in rural Oklahoma better methods for getting their work done in areas such as gardening, canning, nutrition, and sowing, and to encourage them to improve their family lot, families' living conditions. And whereas currently, the organization develops leadership skills and finds ways throughout or through volunteering to strengthen the community to produce a higher standard of living and a better way of life for all its citizens. And whereas one hundred and fifty years later, the Oklahoma County OHCE members are still serving their community. In twenty twenty-four, they donated around twenty-two thousand hours of service to organizations such as the Oklahoma Veterans Medical Center, the Juvenile Detention Center, Grandparents Raising Grandchildren, Oklahoma Literacy Coalition, and the Oklahoma Mental Health Association. And whereas Oklahoma County OHCE recognizes their great responsibility toward Oklahoma families and continues to safeguard the primary ideals of family life. Whereas Oklahoma County OHCE provides a healthy outlet for its eight groups and over ninety members to reach out to others in their communities through personal service and education. And now therefore, let it be resolved that Oklahoma County, Oklahoma Home and Community Education asks the Oklahoma County Commissioners to proclaim May fourth through May tenth twenty twenty-five as Oklahoma Home and Community Education Week.
Very good. I'll move it.
There's motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Would you ladies like to speak? Absolutely. Please do.
Hi, I'm Lisa Hamblin. I am one of the Family and Consumer Sciences educators at the Oklahoma County OSU Extension Center, and I'm also the advisor to the eight OHCE groups in Oklahoma County. They are all over Oklahoma County. They represent Edmund, they represent Bethany, they represent the South Side, the East Side. They meet all over Oklahoma County. They do all kinds of volunteer work, just as he said. And today, I'm privileged to bring Beverly Kirk with me today. She is our county secretary as well as the president of one of our newer groups, one of our specialty groups, the Oklahoma County OHCE Scissor Tales Quilt Guild. And she's going to tell you a little bit about her group and what they've done over the last couple of years.
And by the way, Sister Kirk is a District One resident. And let me tell you, she knows how to quilt, and I'm still waiting on my private lesson, by the way.
You've spoken for me. Thank you. To each of you, good morning. And again, we're pleased to receive and be a part of this proclamation that you've issued on behalf of Oklahoma Home and Education, Home and County, Community Education within OSU County Extension Center, which is our location. We endeavor to build community, to strengthen friendships, to be able to communicate, and then to be charitable in our givings. We quilt, and we love it, and we invite others to come along beside us. Thank you.
Absolutely. Would you like a picture? Okay, excellent.
You guys look at me now. Thank you. He's serious. Let me also brag on Beverly's group. Last summer, they held the first Oklahoma County OHCE Juneteenth Quilt Show at our office, which was well attended. They took this year to rest, and hopefully next year you all come and visit the twenty twenty-six OHCE Juneteenth Quilt Show.
Item twenty-six. Stacy?
This is a very interesting project that came to us. OG&E has six superload transports that they need to deliver to the Horseshoe Lake Power Plant out of thirty-six of Dobbs from the downtown rail line. These are big loads, half million pound transformers. When you put the truck and trailer in there, they're nine hundred thousand pound payloads, ten times what our bridges can carry. So we've been working with these transport companies for about a month, trying to figure out how to get a route out there. We've got that accomplished. The current configuration is a hundred and fifty-two foot transport vehicle, sixteen feet wide with twenty-four axles. And the axle spacings vary so that we can get across these bridges. We need to put in place an oversight permit process through this board. Just in case I transposed a number in my calculations, you better have some insurance. So the key thing is to collect some insurance from these transport companies. So I'd ask for you to approve this permit process today, and then we'll have some permits to approve today and over the summer, and probably in your motion, have the chairman be able to sign these.
I move that we implement this policy with it also being the policy that the chair of the board would sign them.
There's motion and second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item twenty-seven, CED five funds.
This is, the CED about every year offers some monies to each Commissioner District. I think it's twenty-five thousand
Twenty-five.
per this year. This is the first application, CED, or District Two is going to get a dump truck. And I still need the applications from one and three, and this is the last month to do it.
When, when is the deadline?
This month.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And he was mentioning that in the event you're not in position or ready or something, District Two does have some, so we, in the past, if we haven't been ready for something, we've yielded for the other two districts so that the county doesn't lose, so it just would be upon you to tell us that you're not ready for this deadline.
Absolutely.
I'll move the item.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-eight, gentleman needs to be stricken. Unfortunately, nobody nominated anybody for the month of April.
Can you move to strike?
There's motion and a second. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-nine also needs to be stricken. We're working up a new contract with Tyler for this item.
Second.
There's motion and a second to strike. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item thirty is the treasures. Anybody here to speak about this? This is just our opioid jewel. It might be a Jessica thing. Clayton, you want to? Oh, there's Christie. What timing? That's impeccable.
This is just a resolution to invest our opioid and Juul settlements funds separately, which means the interest will stay in the fund. There's currently two point nine million in that fund, two point six is attributed to opioid with about two hundred and eighty thousand per Juul. And nothing's been spent out of those funds yet.
That's correct. You've heard the explanation. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners comments. Commissioner Mon?
None.
Mr. Pettis? None for me. Any new business? Seeing no new business. Is there a motion to recess in executive session?
So move.
All right. Is there a motion to return from executive session? There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirty-two. Oh. Do what? Oh, you don't have anybody that was a?
Idea is straight out.
My bad. I should have asked you, Sharon. All right. Is there action on item number thirty-two?
Move to proceed is discussed.
There's a motion and a second to proceed is discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't have any slips, Sharon, do you? Okay.
Option to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn. Seeing no objection. That'll be the order. We stand adjourned. Stay tuned for P B A. What's that? Yeah, I'm in. You tell me you're ready. All right. Okay, I called the Public Buildings Authority meeting to order. All three members present. So this meeting was posted properly on May second, two thousand and twenty-five. Item number one is the claims.
What are the claims?
There's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor? Aye. Mr. Pettis, this is what we discussed last week. Are you still going to make a motion to strike?
Yes, actually, the motion that I will be making will be to defer to May the fourteenth.
Okay.
I'd ask Mr. Davidson, Jared Davidson, to be here today just to answer a couple of questions, just for consideration. It's okay? I'd like to have that forward, just. For those in the audience, he's our bond counsel for this item.
More commissioners.
Thank you for being here. So.
And not related.
And not related to Commissioner.
We like to say that.
Always like, always like to point that out. So just in the discussions that we've had, I just wanted clarity. So in the indenture or in the charter for our P B A, it doesn't require us to find revenue-generating properties?
That's right. So the, the P B A indenture, it was originally set up to help the county finance other public properties. Or for use of the beneficiary. And so the, the big, you know, example that we go to all the time is the parking garage. You know, that was acquired, you know, through a, you know, a revenue bond issue because it helps support kind of the functions of the county government. Also provides a, a good revenue source, you know, for the county to help, you know, with some of these other projects. So take that landscape, basically, any public project that the county has before it, it could utilize P B A to, to acquire, finance, kind of whatever along those lines. But it doesn't have to be restricted to a revenue-producing facility.
So it could be used for the jail?
Yes.
And then also with regards to the parking garage, and even though I was a staffer here at the time, and I think it was a good idea. I can't imagine downtown now without it, but it's taken, it was a thirty-year payoff. We have nine years to go. We've twice refinanced those bonds and still owe what we owe. So it's taken a long time to, to make a revenue-generating source completely paid off.
Yeah, it's, yeah, those bonds, I think, were originally issued in two thousand and two-ish, two thousand and two to two thousand and four, if I'm remembering right. There were kind of two separate tranches. We refinanced those in two thousand and twelve, and then we refinanced those again in two thousand and twenty. You'll probably remember when we were having the discussion last year, we'd never want to be kind of right at that one-times coverage on the P B A bonds because the rating agencies will want to make sure that we've got kind of some sufficient gap. And so we've tried to stay away from kind of that bare minimum gap, you know, relative to that. So we, we bring in a little bit more every year than what's necessary to pay the bonds back, but we still need to keep that buffer kind of to keep our rating where it should be and just for, to absorb any shocks kind of in the in-between.
And then is there any concern about any project that we go take on, say the jail or others, that you think give the bondholders heartburn or pause or?
I, I don't think so. When we were talking about structuring kind of this next tranche of P B A debt, we had a pretty laundry list of items. And it was just kind of like, what can we fund kind of the fastest? And kind of check some of these deferred maintenance things off. And in the, in, in the official statement that actually got posted, you know, to see the investors, we broadly defined kind of capital improvements to the annex, the courthouse, juvenile justice, and kind of the jail, you know, as kind of the major components of that project. We didn't assign kind of specific dollar amounts, but we kind of gave rough estimates of kind of what we thought each project, you know, was going to cost.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Can, can you go back through the list of projects?
I'm not sure I've got the complete list with me today, but I can give you kind of the, the rough sketch of what we have.
Yes, please.
So the document that I like to say, you know, when you're reading bond documents, if you want to read a bond indenture or an official statement, they'll push you to sleep. We can help cure your insomnia. But specifically, as identified in the official statements, the bonds are being issued by the issuer to provide funds that will be used by the P B A to, one, finance certain capital improvements benefiting Oklahoma County, including but not limited to campus security, courthouse and annex renovations, improvements to leasehold properties of the Public Buildings Authority, juvenile justice center improvements, property acquisition, and new county jail construction, along with related costs. We've got a spreadsheet, Mr. Pettis, that we can send to you, or I can have Keith send to you, kind of where we originally thought some of those dollars were going to go.
One last question. Do you have a policy about, so we, we drew fifteen and sold those with on hold another fifteen potentially that could be tapped? So if any of these, I know that like if we choose not to use the other fifteen, you just don't ever sell them. Is there any process for the fifteen that's already been drawn that's not used? I know that's rather unlikely, but I just didn't know the answer to that question when someone asked me this last week.
Yeah, so typically, no. There's not a provision where you can kind of call those bonds in early. Kind of the standard market conditions are you go out, you sell, and there'll be a call period that's kind of baked into the document where you can prepay those at a point in the future without prepayment penalty. And that's about ten years typically. And so we're a little over two years, kind of in, or yeah, a little over a year and a half, I guess, into that process now. We issued those bonds in February of last year. And remember, we've got a reasonable expectations test that we're going to spend at least eighty-five percent, if not a hundred percent of those proceeds, within three years, just to comply with the federal tax rules.
Which is usually not a problem for government.
That's exactly right.
But I, I, more or less, the short answer is, is we've got those, we're, we'll own those.
That's right.
Thank you very much for your time.
You bet.
Questions I have, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. There's a motion to defer until May fourteenth. Is that what you said?
Yes, May the fourteenth.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number three.
Move the parking spots.
There's a motion and a second to approve parking spots. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizen participation? I do not have any slips. Sharon does not. Board comments? Mr. Pettis? Mr. Maun, Commissioner?
No.
Any business? Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
There's a motion, no objection. That'll be the order. We stand adjourned.